Okay, I'm gonna call to order the regularly scheduled meeting of the Simsbury Planning Commission. Today is Tuesday, September 28th. Welcome Commissioners. All who can and choose to please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me and I'll just share my American flag screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag. Thank you Commissioners. And now we'll take the roll. Okay, if you're here, please let me know. Holly Bem?
Here.
David Bloomey? I know you're there Dave.
Maybe he's muted.
Dave, we cannot hear you anymore either. Okay, we'll come back. Erin Levitt Smith? Craig McCormack?
Here.
Alan Needham has resigned. Bill Rice is present. So that gives us one, two, three, four, five regular members. And it looks like we got seated, 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 seated. Alright, Rich, it looks like you're up. If you wouldn't mind, I'd like to promote you to a regular member tonight.
Thank you.
Julie, you are still an alternate tonight, but you'll be shown as present on the roll call. Okay, very good.
I have a quick question for you, Bill.
Okay, Rich.
Everybody participates in the workshop portion, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a couple of minutes of meetings to review. The first one is from our July 13th. Meeting. You know what, Mike, I have a question for you. Should, should we elect another secretary?
Yeah, and I gotta check your bylaws. I think we, check if we have to keep it on the agenda for two meetings before you can elect a position.
I know that's at least the case for Chairman. Does that apply for it? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll look at the bylaws a little bit later, figure that out.
Yep.
Okay, but it would be my intent to solicit nominations and potentially have a vote. So I'll let everybody know what the, what the ruling is on that one. But in the absence of a secretary, I guess I'll go ahead and lead the review of the minutes. So we have the minutes of July 13th, 2021. Does anyone have any comments on page one? And for me, that's lines one through 53.
I'm gonna take for Mike's word that all of these lot numbers are correct.
I think Mike's double-checked those.
I didn't see anything.
Page two, lines 54 through 105. Lines 106 through 157. Okay. Lines 158 through 209. Lines 210 through 260. Lines 261 through 312. And what I have on the last page is lines 313 through 323. Okay. Good job, Mike. Okay, do I have a motion to approve, to accept the minutes, to approve the minutes as submitted? Thank you, Erin.
I'm seconded.
Holly seconds, okay. Any discussion on the minutes or the motion to approve the minutes from July 13th? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving the minutes as submitted, please say aye. Okay, any, any nays? Any abstentions?
Bill, I'm gonna abstain, I was not at that meeting.
Yeah, okay, so we have Holly and Julie, Rich and Erin. That's four ayes, zero nays, and I'm also abstaining because I was not at that meeting. So the motion passes. Very good.
Hey Bill, I'm not seated, so I didn't vote.
Oh, 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 oh.
Man, I'm happy to, because I did present, but I'm not seated, so I don't want to be counted if I'm not.
Okay, so that would be.
But shouldn't she be seated? Because we need her to be a sixth, no?
No, okay.
Dave was on.
Dave was on, but he's not. Okay.
Oh, okay, sorry. As I was having my technical difficulties.
Right, I was all excited that we had, had a quorum, or you know, so let's do this. I'm gonna go back to the attendance. Yeah, I guess we're not gonna be able to count on Dave. So Julie, I'd like to promote you to a full member tonight.
Okay.
And Dave, I'll make some type of note. Tech issues. Alright, so now Julie, you can vote.
I will vote in agreement.
Okay.
The minutes.
Four ayes, no nays, and two abstentions. Alright. Second set of minutes were from our last meeting, which was September 14th. I'll lead us through here as well. I have a comment on line five. The, the date is shown as July 13th, so that needs to be changed to September 14th.
Oh, I didn't even pick that up.
Let's see here. Absent was Holly, but she was excused, and we had Dave. Yeah, we had Erin, we had Craig, and we had Bill. And Rich and Julie were both seated. Okay, so the, the minutes right now. Okay, so Mike, it says alternates Julie Eaton and Rich Cortez. It doesn't indicate that they were seated.
Line 18.
Well, line 18, there we go. Thank you. Part of the minutes. Super. Okay, anything else on page one Commissioners?
I didn't see anything.
Page two, lines 52 through 69.
Looks good.
Okay. Is there a motion to, to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Craig makes the motion.
Second.
Erin seconded, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of approving the minutes from September 14th as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I abstained.
Okay. Or any, any nays? She did that one first. Okay, so we have five, five ayes, zero nays, and one abstention. So Dave, Dave, can you hear me?
Dave's muted.
Alright Dave, so we realize you might be having some technical issues, so I have seated Julie in your place. So just be, be aware that you're not a voting member at this point. So now Dave, you're in twice. Okay, we're gonna move on. We have no public hearings, no applications, no new business. The old business that we have is the workshop on potential updates to the 2017 Plan of Conservation and Development. Homework from the last meeting was to take a look at section seven and eight. And come prepared to suggest any, any improvements that you may see fit with, there, there was a particular focus on removing the word "character" from, from the text. So Mike had put copies of the Word documents on the Dropbox. They were too big to, to email around. I took a stab at, at marking up section seven. Essentially, what I did was I just pretty much struck out where, wherever it said "community character", and put in, I put in physical attributes, but I think the term that we, that we used last time was something different. Mike, you, you reminded me of it today. What was it again?
The physical characteristics is, is the language directly from the statute?
Physical characteristics. Okay, so maybe, maybe what I can do, let me just bring this up and just give you a flavor of the extent of the changes. Can you share my screen?
I use "unique" too, instead of I'm trying to think of "character", you know, "unique", whatever, but we can go through, yeah.
Where's my document? Guys, I have to get a Kleenex. Hold on, just, I can be right back.
So in lieu of physical characteristics.
Community resources.
Which to me, it seemed a little bit narrow. I'm thinking maybe like environmental resources or not resource, you know, something, something that talks more about what's in the environment, the I, I don't know, it's not necessarily physical, right? I guess mostly it is, it's what you see, but it's also what you feel, hear, you know.
The things you were describing are physical.
Suppose.
I mean, it doesn't have a great comfy ring to it, but it is dryly appropriate.
What, I, what was the?
You're just gonna beat out any character you get in our writing.
I, so Dave, Craig, what were you suggesting to use?
Well, I was just thinking, set of physical characteristics and something like environmental characteristics, but that might not be the best either. I don't know.
I put like in, in the beginning of chapter seven, it says maintain and enhance community character. I put maintain and enhance community resources or unique community resources. Because a sense of place doesn't tell us, we don't know what a sense of place is, but people know what community resources are, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, Erin, I like that, and I just, I had community amenities. I just lifted it from the picture. I wasn't being very creative.
It's hard, because to me.
Natural resources. You could put community and natural resources, I guess, because there's community resources and there's natural. So that's the other thing I had down.
To me, the word "character" is perfect, but I understand why we're discussing alternatives.
I like what you.
What was that?
I just wanted to say, I thought that was nice that you had community and natural resources. I think that rather well. Yeah, I think it's what we're trying to say.
Right, so that, that, the title would be maintain and enhance community and natural resources.
Would you want to include cultural resources?
Wouldn't that be under community?
I don't, I'm, I'm just asking.
Oh.
Look, look at some of the pictures there. Your, your, your pictures on the page of, start of chapter 10, seven.
Yep.
You have, for example, the meeting house. I would view that as a cultural resource.
But wouldn't that be, that's also could be considered a community resource? I, I thought community might be more encompassing. I was trying to think general, I don't know.
We could have community, cultural, and natural resources. I, I think it's nice to be specific. It's a little cumbersome, maybe, but.
Or what you do is you the title, maintain and enhance community resources, and then you go down and the overview is natural beauty, natural resources, cultural, do you know what I mean? Then you could spell it out further, but I think if you put too many in the heading, do you know what I mean? So make it general and then explain what are those community resources? They're the natural, you know, the natural resources, the cultural amenities, maybe that's getting Julie's word amenities, do you know what I mean? And then you could spell that out in the overview. I don't know, just whittle it down.
And be careful about using the word "cultural", because you get back to the reason why they got rid of the word "character".
That's a good point. Yeah, I was trying to stay general and vanilla, you know what I mean? Like just bland.
Just, just to re, re, reframe the discussion here, right? We're looking for alternative, we're looking for ways to eliminate the word "character" because of the connotation apparently that it creates. Right? But in doing so, it seems like everywhere throughout this document, we refer to "character", the terms that we're talking about right now, we're gonna just make this so much longer and more cumbersome to read.
That's what censorship does.
Well, like Craig, on page 41.
Yep.
There's in the blue box, listing of some of the current and former character resources. I just changed "character" and put in "unique".
Special, unique.
Why do we need the adjective? Could just be events and resources. I have my editor mode on.
That's true, the listings, some of the current, former events and resources. Or resource, resources, that's a good way to do it, Julie. Put former resources and events. That, that's a good idea.
You know, to me, that, that's fine, except that it doesn't really kind of express the sense of place part of it, you know what I mean? The, you know, look at page 39, you know, sense of place, it, it shows of, you know, planning farm, you know, or, you know, it, resources to me, it's a great word, but I think of, you know, cultural resources, that, you know, educational resources, specific things like that, as opposed to this, 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 this sense that, again, you know it when you see it, but you, you know, harder to articulate exactly what it is.
I'm kinda leaning towards not changing it.
Not changing what?
The word.
I don't know how you get around not.
I'm gonna agree with Bill. I, I agree.
But there's no law that says you, you can't use the word "character"?
No, but I think we've gotten feedback from one of the public hearings that the way in which we used it was.
Well, I think if you look, if you look at all the definitions that are in this section here, that talk about the character of the town, there's not a single thing about what a person looks like, what a person, where they come from, or anything like that. It's all about places in town.
Yeah, I agree with Bill. I agree with Bill. I.
I do too, for the record. I, 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 I think that what we, what you folks, when you wrote this, intended to say is, is well said with the, with the use of the word "character".
Right, and I think when I mentioned that at one of the public hearings, as I said, that wasn't our intent, and I really thought about it afterward. And it doesn't matter what our intent was. Because people found it offensive, or they didn't like the word, and so I, I think, you know, I, I kind of took that tart and like sat down and said, oh, that wasn't our intent, but could we word this differently? So I, I feel like we should, but, you know, I, if I'm outnumbered, I'm outnumbered, but I, I.
Well, let's talk about numbers. Let's talk about numbers. We represent the entire town. I, I think we heard from some people who wanted to read things into it. I, I don't think, if you read this, if you actually looked at this chapter and didn't just make a blanket statement about the word "character", you can't come away with anything negative here.
Then why, why not take it out?
As an elected official, I, we've got 27,000 people to represent, and I think most of them like this.
We don't know that, though. Those are the people that showed up in that, the public hearing, that's what, I mean, I, I don't, I don't know.
But that doesn't, that wasn't a public hearing that was scheduled to discuss the POCD's wording in particular.
No, but there, there.
Raised it like that and said, boy, if you don't show up for this, you're gonna get, whoever walks in here and makes any comments, gonna completely change how we do it. No, that wasn't the purpose of that meeting.
I, I thought.
I agree, it wasn't the, it wasn't the purpose, and I actually mentioned that, and several of the people were like, it doesn't matter what the intent, this was, and so I, I really did give that some thought, and I, I thought it was kind of interesting, and in lieu of the legislation, which, you know, that was, you know, floating around this year, I, I did read this and thought, you know, maybe somebody who isn't in the same position as me, or, you know, would take that and go, hmm, what, what do they really mean? And I don't know, you know.
I, I know we just started talking about this, and maybe I shouldn't summarily dismiss any changes, but we're kind of tripping over what a, you know, an acceptable substitute would be.
Right.
When "character" is the perfect word, like Craig said earlier.
Yeah.
If, if we didn't have so many specific examples of exactly what we mean, then people might have a point. All I hear is, I didn't read. That's all I hear.
Can I, can I get in here?
Yeah, Rich, yep.
Dude, didn't Mike tell us there was something passed in state law about using this terminology?
I thought so.
The zoning reorg bill.
So if it's in state law, we need to change the terminology. Let's just find a word that fits and move on with our lives.
I, I don't think that, that law applies to POCDs actually. So, and, and, you know, Rich, I, I, I took the, the approach that you just mentioned when I started marking this up, and I said, wherever I see character, I want to put physical attributes. And, you know, worked in most spots, but it is a little clunky. If, now, I, I really take offense to substituting physical characteristics for character. I think we're splitting hairs. And that was, that was the change that was made in, in, in the zoning portion of the, the state statutes. You know, if we, if we just want to do a blanket change character to physical characteristics, I have no problem with that. I don't think we have to. Think it's a little, you know, I guess it, like, maybe I'm being a little under, underly sensitive. But you know, it's, it's not as simple as doing a, a global search and replace. You have to read what's going on, so it still makes sense.
No, I agree, I agree with that, and I don't mind taking the time to do that, but I want to understand better than what that state statute does say to us.
Mike, can you bring that back up? Do you have quick access to it?
Yeah, let me, give me two seconds, I'll let up out of the Dropbox. But I mean, just, maybe just quick to summarize it as I pull up the Dropbox here. And I'll pull the actual law up, oops, sorry. It, it really points, it's, one, it's, it's the zoning commission, but also remember, you know, you, that when you develop zoning regulations, you look at your POCD too, at least you're supposed to, and say, does, does the car get us to where the roadmap wants us to be? So, you know, technically, your zoning regs are using, should be using your POCD as a reference point, so, you know, one thing that, that would run it, run a file is that you have your, the state statute now saying you can't say these terms. So therefore, your zoning regs can't, for your POCD, you're gonna be stuck with, well, if you contradict state statute, you're kind of given a bad direction on, on zoning regulations development in the future. So that's, it's something to consider. And let me just see, make sure this is it.
What you showed us last time was, you know, the marked up version of, it was the, what, what was it, the presentation from one of the land use attorneys?
Yeah, I'm just getting to the slide right now as we speak, and then I will.
So yeah, I find it, just, I don't know, I'm having a hard time with it, guys. You know, physical characteristics, physical site characteristics is what, what they changed character to, right?
That's correct.
Be drafted with reasonable consideration as to the physical site characteristics of the district, no?
Me, that meant you needed to be able to articulate and quantify what you meant by the site characteristics. So when we talk about, you know, the community, or when we talk about agriculture, you talk about the farms. When you talk about the natural resources, you talk about a third of the org, you know, a third of the town is natural resources, open for hiking. You talk about that, and you get rid of the je ne sais quoi that goes with it. So like, when we read it, I think the entire chapter highlights exactly what you meant when you wrote it. It's historic points and places, it's the agricultural resources, and then it's the natural resources per scenic. And it's just this word "character", so if we could go back to the goal, edit the goal, and then that might help you figure out, and I say you, but us, how we go about just either editing the word "character" out, or what a, a opportunity would be to, to change that word. So the goal is enhance the overall character of Simsbury by preserving and protecting the characteristics that contribute to its overall ambience and quality of life. What are those characteristics? Oh, I'm sorry, 44.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah. I'm really linear, so I apologize. I always start at the top, you know, what's your goal, and then work your way down.
Yeah, I was, I was on the actual very first page on 39, like, what is the overview? Because like, once you get the overview, then you, you know, you keep going, so.
Yep.
So what, what did you say for that box?
I don't have a solution. It was more just an open conversation to say, when we said, and I say we, I wasn't part of it, what do we as a group mean when we say maintain and enhance the overall character of Simsbury by preserving and protecting the characteristics that contribute to its overall ambience and quality of life? Like, can we articulate and bullet out what the characteristics are? Perhaps by looking at the goals that's listed in 71, 72? Or in looking at the maps that we've included?
So Julie, why don't you read that, 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 that first statement that you just didn't substitute in? Physical site. physical site characteristics for character?
Well, I think you need to define what the physical site characteristics are. I don't think you can just say
That's the balance of the section.
Right. That's right.
Sorry, guys. I was, I was just making a point here. It's not just site characteristics. If you go to page 40 in the sidebar, the sense of place, um, it talks about, you know, in the third, fourth paragraph, place also is manifested in an interaction between human and habitat. The organizational pattern of a farmstead, for example, includes familiar house, barns, fields, but also includes the experience of a farm, the sounds, the smells, uh, history associated with the site. So it's more than just the site characteristics.
It's the
As an example.
Yeah, it's the character.
It's the character, right?
That's the sense.
Which gets me back to, I mean,
That's a place.
In, in this goal appears at the end of this chapter, it is solely committed to defining the word character. So we start off with maintain and enhance community character on page 39. We spend five long detailed pages clarifying what our intentions are and what we mean by that. And then we wrap it up saying, that's what we want to do. Preserve and protect the characteristics that contribute to overall ambience. That's an environmental word I think you were looking for. Uh, ambience and quality of life. I think it reads very well. It's quite clear.
Well, it's not clear to everybody. I think that's the point.
You got 27,000 people, you're gonna have some belly acres.
Well, I know
This is not about belly
Majority.
Right now. This is not about belly aching. This is about people who feel like they're being imposed upon and prevented from entering the community. It's not belly acres.
I agree. I, I just think, I, I, you know, again, I, I just go back to, I, I didn't, I didn't, um, have any intention of closing people out or making people uncomfortable with this P O C D. It was also written five, uh, five years ago, really now. Um, and things have changed. The world has changed a lot in five years. And so if people feel marginalized by using that word, there has to be a better way to state it that makes people feel more included or not excluded. And, um, you know, whether it was my intent or not, it wasn't. And I get, but I, I also understand that it doesn't matter what my intentions were, um, that it, it affects people. I, I just, and with the law, I'm not sure I like all the wordiness. So I think we can do better at coming up with something else to put in, but I, I just really think we need to be careful on how it's worded. There has to be a more inclusive way of doing it.
Is there, um, a section we can point to where we have excluded someone?
Holly, it's not about what the document says. I think it's about how the document says it and what that brings up for people. And so, you know, um, it's difficult for me, you know, to sit here because the, um, what an innocent for me and for Rich might be perceived very differently because of his life experiences. And I'm, I can't say, what do you mean you're afraid because the police pull you over? What, what do you have to be afraid of? Well, as a black man, you would, right? But as a white woman, you don't. So
And I agree. We're talking about the police pulling people over. That's a different subject. I'm talking
But what I'm saying is it's about, I use that as a, as an extreme example. So it doesn't matter what, it's, it's how these words jump out at people and how it's interpreted, how it makes them feel. And so that's, that's what it is. It's about how do we make this a more inclusive, friendly or inclusive worded document? I, I think that's what it's all about. Um, and if our intention is to explain, then let's come up with some other words here and there that might make it um, more palatable for people.
What if I find it offensive?
Well, then I, well, that, what do you find offensive, taking
I don't know. What are you going to write?
Well, that's what we have to talk about, I think.
I'm just kind of playing devil's advocate a little bit here. I, I, I understand Rich, your comments. I appreciate that. Um, I, I'm waiting to hear some substitute terminology.
So, so number one, there isn't an overall substitute terminology that we can use despite what I said before. This, the whole thing needs to be wordsmithed better. It can be done. It's a slog. It's not going to be easy. It's going to take some time to do. Now, either as a group, we're going to do it or we're not. We can, we can argue that character says everything we want to say, but that changes nothing. And it doesn't progress anything. So you got to make a decision. Because I'm hearing the majority of the group saying, we don't want to change it. It's fine the way it is. If that's what you didn't want to do, that's fine. Then just say it. And vote on it and do it. I think this needs to change.
I agree. I think it needs to change too. I thought that was loud and clear from what people feedback they gave us months ago. And I've really given this a lot of thought. Because I came up with that very statement, Holly, I said, that wasn't our intention. And they had to come back. And that's when I really thought about it. And so I, I hold on just a second. I, I really do think it needs to change.
I, I didn't hear anyone reciting chapter and verse of the P O C D. I heard a blanket statement against one word with no indication that it had, that this chapter had been read. I used
But Holly, nobody's going to come to town and say, hey, I didn't move here because I don't think you guys like white people. Nobody's going to come here and say that to you. We're not going to get those kind of examples. The only thing we're going to get are people who read it from an arm's length point of view and look at and say, this is problematic for people who might want to come here. They're going to read this and say, that's, that's not the place I want to live. And that's not what we're intending to convey. At least I don't think it is.
And I don't
That's what, if that's the face we're putting forward.
Could I, could I make a suggestion? How about instead of changing the words, we add words like, uh, or in some way express the town's desire to be more inclusive or be inclusive and diverse. And that is what part, is what part of makes the, or will make a part of the, the, make up the part of the character of our town that we embrace and love.
You could say feel then. I agree. I have wording in here that has inclusive and diversity and all that. I mean, I, I, I took time to do seven and eight a while ago.
Just, just so to Rich's point, we, if and when people read this to try to decide whether this is the town they want to live in, we make it abundantly clear that we want, we, you know, our objective here, uh, in describing what the town is, is, is a town that also is inclusive and open and welcoming and diverse. And that's what our goal is. And that's, that will then make up the fabric of our culture and our, and our, our character for the town. Because if, if, if people, if it's, it's not saying the right things about what it's not a complete enough in terms of what it, you know, it's describing what it is that we hope the town to be, then let's add what's missing. As opposed to taking away what we, I think largely feel is a, 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 a good descriptive term um, to articulate kind of what it is that we love about town. Um, anyway, it's a really hard subject.
So I, Craig, I would say, um, well, first, Holly, I think they made comments and people had read some of the P O C D because they specifically mentioned um, words, phrases, points in here around that use of character and what we were trying to convey. So I think it was more than just a passing fancy. Um, Craig, I still think the word character is problematic. I get what you're saying. I think we can be descriptive, but I, I still think we have to be careful with the wording. That's just my opinion.
I, so I might not be as in tune to some of these concerns and, and it's just because of my own personal experiences. But it sounds to me as though the concern is about some people's interpretation of that word. And I'm not making judgment about their interpretation. It just sounds to me like some people are, are choosing to interpret that word in a way that's offensive to them, right? And I think that most people have said that that was never the intention, but you know, Aaron, to your point, this isn't about what are the intention was, right? It's about making the document clear in terms of in describing the town, what we, what we hope the town to be.
Right.
Um, in, in any event, it doesn't really solve anything other than it seems like the root of the problem is apparently, well, the use of the word, but then maybe also the, the, the document not being clear enough about all of the attributes that we want to, um, see represented in our town. I don't know. Mr. Chairman, how should we proceed here?
Trying to bring up the, uh, regional planning. Regional plan. See what's in there. You know, another thing that just kind of I've been thinking about is maybe we ask for some professional guidance. Um, maybe we bring Glenn Black back in and ask him, hey, what's changed between, you know, 20, when we kind of wrote this in 2016, 2017 and now, uh, how are other municipalities, um, uh, adjusting, you know, their P O C D's? Um, we're, we're, we have a lot of, you know, we have a lot of ideas. Um, and I, I think, I think I'm looking for a little, a little more input from, um, someone with some direct experience.
I think that's a great idea, Bill. I mean, because Glenn was with us when we did this. He knows what our intention was, right? But let's, i- if we could consult with him again and say, hey, this is the feedback we're getting. Here's where we are five years later. It's a different world. You know, how can you guide us? This is, these are some of our ideas, but how can we wordsmith? I don't, do we, do we have the ability to do that, Mike?
Uh, I, I need to talk to Glenn. We have funds in a capital account that could, for planning studies, which could finance this project, but I just, I would have to talk to Glenn first at a quote and how, how much it's going to cost us to do these two chapters. Let's just say, can you look at just these two chapters? Seven and eight. And, you know, the, the reason is like what we just discussed, we're grappling with 2017 versus 2021, very different world. And how do we get, how do we, um, articulate our, our goals without, uh, kind of basically, um, leaving some out or, or offending individuals? Because I think you're right. I mean, your P O C D, i- it does say goals in it. However, um, it's, can be interpreted other ways. Um, and unfortunately, in, in, in the land use world that we live in right now, you know, character is one of those ones that all you hear about is how in other communities it's used as a weapon, uh, especially against multifamily housing developments. Um, and that's kind of, that's the buzz right now. So that's
Or affordable housing.
That's, that's everyone's mind right now. So when you say that, that's the first reaction. They may not read and see that, that, that you didn't intend what, what that as a goal. Um, well, yeah, I can, I can reach out to Glenn, get a, uh, an estimate as long, you know, as a, we'd have to look at the numbers first and see whether I need to get additional quotes, et cetera. Uh, but I have planning study money that we can use to do that, to update just these two specific chapters, if the commission is interested in pursuing that. And I think that would be, he, Glenn would be a, um, an excellent resource for us because he's also going to give us a perspective. He's doing, doing other P O C D's right now throughout the state.
Right. That's, that's what I'm thinking.
He's probably
Good suggestion.
Product.
Where the heck's the chat box on this thing?
Um, I don't think we have a chat box on here enabled. The chat is, is not enabled for some reason. I'm sorry.
Maybe because we're live streaming and it'd be content that couldn't be seen by everybody. All right. So what I'm going to do is I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, send everyone the link to the, uh, Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Plan of Conservation and Development. Um, I'm looking at it right now. I don't, okay. It was adopted in 2014, so it, it may not afford much insight. Um, but it is, it is one of the publications that we, uh, can draw from when creating our, our, you know, municipal, uh, plan of conservation and development. So I was hoping it was a little more up to date than that. Uh, I really don't, I'm looking at the chapters right now. Okay. I'll just share my screen. I'll show you guys. So do you see my screen or did I screw it up?
It's done.
What do you say? You seeing our, our C O P D?
No.
P O C
There we go.
You see Krag?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right. So this is the Capital Region Council of Governments. Sims Berry is part of, uh, this, uh, regional, uh, organization. Uh, here are the, uh, chapters. Each one you click, I'll send everyone the link. You can look at this, but I read them here. Regional strengths and demographics, natural resource, watersheds, open space, climate change, food systems and food security, land use, public sewer and water, transportation, housing, economic development, vibrant green Connecticut. So nothing explicitly talking about, um, inclusiveness or diversity. But again, that may have been because of the, the year it was published.
Right.
Now, if we went to, if we went to the statute that talks about, um, plans of conservation and development, um, I, I, I'd have to look at it again to see what elements, uh, the town's P O C D must, uh, must cover. So let me see if I can find that. Mike, do you know what C G S, uh, is for, um, plan of conservation and development?
Dear, uh, C G S eight, 20, 23, I want to say. Cause 24 obviously is the municipal, 26 is subdivisions. So.
Eight dash 23?
Yeah.
Prepare, yep, there it is. Preparation amendment, uh, or adoption of plan of conservation and development. So this looks like it was issued in 2012. So that's not going to, uh, give us much direction either.
No, actually, Bill, that, that statute was updated recently, but the updates had to do with, um, uh, climate change, resiliency and, um, furthering the, the goals of, uh, uh, Fair Housing Act. Those are the three changes that I recall.
Oh, this is searching all of us. Okay. That's not what I love to do. Again, I was looking for guidance on what, what were the minimum requirements or, uh, that, that, that need to be in the P O C D. So I don't think it's going to talk about inclusivity or diversity. So I'm back to, uh, you know, bringing in, um, a consultant. So we can at least have another outsider's, uh, an insider from outside. Right?
Yep.
Uh, and, and maybe see if he's had some experience with this already. Um, so we don't have to, you know, get too, uh, I don't know. Uh, I don't want to get too overly emotional with the subject. So Mike, yeah, if you could reach out to Glenn, um, you know, do whatever you have to do, get a quote or, you know, take his temperature and, and see, you know, is this something that's getting a lot of attention in other P O C D's and, um, see what he, see what he can offer us.
Okay.
Mike, just out of curiosity, do you get much feedback or have much insight from your counter Mike, just out of curiosity, do you get much feedback or have much insight from your counterparts in our, like, peer? You know, our peer group of municipalities about how they're dealing with this issue?
We're all in the same boat right now. Everyone, at least in this immediate area, everyone's kind of waiting to see who's the first one to, to kind of address this issue. Because I mean, it just came on, it came under our plate in July. Right. We're really, this is a new issue. That's why possibly Glenn and the fact that he's working all over the state and he has to be working on updates to other P O C Ds is probably the first resource I actually would, would contact. Because our peers are, like I said, we're in the same boat.
So just as an observation, right? The, I think the statutes say that this has to be created or updated every 10 years, right?
Yep.
And this is, to use your words, Mike, a new issue, relatively new issue phenomenon internationally, really, but you know, obviously there's been issues and, and events that have kind of given rise to, you know, more conversation around this. I guess where I'm going is that say we tackle this with guidance from a consultant, we come up with the appropriate way to address it. And three years from now, another issue comes along or something else. And now, you know, so it's, it's, I guess it's kind of a perpetual thing, right? Possibility that we need to make edits and, and so I don't know why they make it a 10-year time span. Maybe it should just be a living document. It's always
Well, there's nothing that precludes us from revising it, Craig.
No, I know, I know, but
And, and actually, Craig, in a perfect world, you would be, we would be updating the, the P O C D, not just once every 10 years. We would address it because if you think of it, that P O C D is where we want to be in 10 years. Well, as we know right now, in 2017 versus 2021, we're very different paths. We're looking at very, we, we're focused on two very different paths now. You know, we're, we're, we're taking a left instead of taking a right. So like the planning process, if, if it's a living document that's updated regularly, then it's, then it's a working document. It's a relevant document. If it's a document that you only touch once every 10 years, then it, it becomes stale quick.
Oh, my God. I wasn't suggesting we only look at it every 10 years.
No, 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 nor was I, nor was I.
Like you, you know, in your last statement, you said something about in 2017, you know, we're doing one thing and now we're doing something else. We were going left, now we're going right. Could you, could you explain that a little bit more?
No, I'm just talking about the perspective. I'm sorry, you know, not saying that we're actually changing anything, but the perspective, kind of what we've heard about, you know, community character, for example. That's something that we wasn't, wasn't something that we were on our radars as an issue that would offend anyone. Now we have to be sensitive to that. We have to look at, you know, how does that impact? You know, where do we want to go? What do we want to preserve, et cetera, and not throw codes that it's saying that the, the, the community's closed to you. Because that's what, that's what is kind of what Rich said earlier, what some people feel when they hear that.
Right.
So it's, it's being sensitive to the current, it's not so much changing what we're doing, but it's more sensitive to the current state of affairs. It's the current mindset, et cetera. And seeing how can we get to those, can we still achieve the goals that we wanted to do in 2017? Or are there different ones that we, we think we should?
All right, thanks. Okay, let's, uh, let's move on. So Mike, please see what you can do with Glenn on that. Earlier this week, I guess it was yesterday, I sent out to everybody a, a link to what's called the Affordable Housing Toolkit. This was presented to the participants in the Regional Planning Commission meeting last Thursday. I thought it was pretty interesting. I've, I've looked through the, the data. I think I, I'm looking at my email to you guys and said, I gave it a quick look, thought it was somewhat useful. The downloadable data links didn't work for me. So right after I sent that email, I sent a note to the gentleman who presented the data last Thursday saying, hey, those links are expired. And he said, geez, Bill, thanks for telling me. I just updated them. So hopefully if any of you tried to click on them, they worked, right?
It's working, it's working right now.
Okay, so you know, there, there are, there are several, let's say, template reports, I'll call them, a lot of charts and graphs and some data. But the, the raw data is there too, that is used to make all those charts and graphs. So if you want to look a little more deeply into things, I don't know, you, you know, maybe someday we'll talk about this a little bit. You know, I saw a couple of things that jumped out at me is that in, in the Capital Region, you know, there's certain, certain towns or municipalities that have peaks of population in the the sixteen or let's say like children, the child ages eight to eight to fifteen and had coincides with a peak of people from forty-five to fifty-five or something. So I equated that to a, you know, a lot of families. And yeah, I, I don't know. I thought it was interesting. You know, you take numbers for what they're, what, what they are. A lot of times you can't really explain one thing from another. A lot of times you think you have the explanation, but it may or may not be true. Though the one thing that I saw, you know, that the median income for our region, it was exactly what we've been talking about around ninety-one thousand dollars a year. I wouldn't expect that to be wrong. That, that's a fundamental number in our discussion on affordable housing. But one of the other, one of the other very interesting things I saw is I think there, there were some towns like Hartford that has a, a lower average or a higher number of affordable units, but it has a lower per occupancy rate. So yeah, I, I don't want to draw any conclusions. You know, to, to me, it would be like the more, the more affordable housing you have, the less people want to live in it. I know that's not true, but the, the, that's, that's one way that I could, I, I, I could put it together. So I put it out there. I thought it was interesting. I wanted to make sure you all saw it. And, you know, if we do have affordable housing discussions, it might, it might prove to be useful at some point.
Yeah. Bill, I thought it was really interesting. I love the interactive graphing and how you could select different towns or regions and kind of see how the data changes. So yeah, pretty neat.
Yep. Now, I, you know, I have a, a basic question, you know, with the whole discussion about inclusivity and diversity and housing equity, is the intent to make you know, every town the same?
Who's that question for?
What was that?
Who's that question for?
I, I just threw it out there. It can, it can be rhetorical if, if nobody wants to respond to it. I just, I'm curious.
It's just meant to make sure that everybody has an opportunity if they wish to live anywhere in a particular area. That's all.
Yeah, but Rich, I think this is, this is where I get hung up on equity and equality. Right? You, you just mentioned had the opportunity that that's not equity. That's equality. So I'm with you. Everyone should have the opportunity. Absolutely.
It, it's just about removing barriers that don't need to be there.
Right, right. But, but the outcome doesn't need to be the same for everybody.
It can't be.
But that's what the equity model shows.
Yeah, but it, it's that, that's a flaw in that, in that argument. It can't be the same for everybody.
Okay, I agree.
If you, if you make twenty thousand dollars a year, you probably can't expect to buy a home in Simsbury. Not now, not twenty years ago, not a hundred years from now. That's not going to happen. But if you can get up to eighty percent of median with programs that could be instituted, you may be able to get into a home in a town like Simsbury if that's where you want to move to. If that's what your, your income level is.
So that offers the opportunity.
Right. That, that's what we're talking about here. We're not talking about building attract to homes that are crap that you can sell for a minimum amount and get a bunch of people in there. And then it looks like you got a bunch of projects. That's not what any of this is all about. It's about creating a system that allows somebody who could potentially make it into an area with whatever programs are available, make it into that area if that's where they desire to be.
Also disabled people so that just because you have a disability that precludes you or, or, you know, monotone, but there should be, what about people that grew up here that are disabled that want to stay here? There's no affordable housing or disabled housing or whatever, that make it easy for them to be able to stay in a, a community where they grew up. You know, it's, it's those kinds of things and making it a more even playing field.
Yeah, the closest thing to that that we have is up by the ice rink where they made some housing for people with, I think it's M S, if I'm not mistaken.
I think so. Yeah.
So you're talking about that sort of stuff. Not, not the traditional garbage that people always come loaded with when they think about this. There are ways to do it. Sometimes it involves a government program. Sometimes it doesn't. It just depends how your particular community decides to set it up. The inner cities have a lot more of this. But you know, the, the areas like us, we don't have much of that going on.
We do have some. I, I'd like to point out that our, the Simsbury Housing Authority has done a very good job at providing some opportunities for people who are far less than eighty percent of the median. I, I have a friend who had a severe mental breakdown who was greatly enhanced by that. And I'm also proud that in our suggestions, our current suggestions for an affordable housing plan that we talk about strengthening the Simsbury Housing Authority and, and extending the very good work they do, the very good work. And, and it is affordable. It is, these aren't fancy structures, but they're just what is needed sometimes and, and when tragedy strikes.
Yeah. Well, okay, this, this subject is not on the agenda. I don't want to go too much further with it. I just wanted to make everyone aware that I did share that, that toolkit with you. That, I think that's all that's on the agenda. Mike, we have any correspondence or applications on the horizon?
No, you, you'll have a one referral at your next meeting from the zoning commission concerning a moratorium on cannabis establishments in Simsbury. So that's, that's, that's all we have right now. Zoning Commission is discussing the zoning reorg bill and accessory dwelling unit portion of the, of the regulations. Kind of determining whether they want to opt out and use their regs or defer to the state statute. So, but that's a, that's a discussion that the, the zoning commission is having and then they're going to make a decision as a commission on how they want to proceed. But this commission, they, they did identify that since this commission developed an affordable housing plan, that before they get to that stage of if they say, no, we're going to opt out, they're going to ask for input from this commission.
Okay.
In addition to your role as through, through an eight, eight, three A referral.
I, I can't remember if this commission has seen the, the latest plan for the development on, on Iron Horse Boulevard. Remember a couple of years ago, Mike Gerard came in and you know, he gave a, a concept and you know, we, we, I, I think as a commission, we were more or less happy with it. And I had asked that you know, he consider an affordable housing component to it. Now, the, the land has since been sold to somebody else who's coming in with their own plans. But they have on their own and whether we had any influence over it or not, they're going to include a certain amount of affordable housing in, in the project. And now that, that there's, there's, there was really no you know, binding reason why they had to do that. So they've kind of decided to do it because they think it's the right thing to do.
You heard though, it's not going to be as it's going to look more cookie cutter-ish than, remember when we had the presentation, they had all these different units and and all that. And I heard it's not going to look like that. Is that true?
The price tag went, so they needed a higher density to justify it. I heard the price tag went up one million dollars just on the basis of the positive reception that they on camera received from the commissions that they shared their plans to.
It's actually the, it was, it's a financial issue that had nothing to do with the, the price tag. It was, banks wouldn't lend to projects with a mixed housing stocks right now. So either you're all apartments or you're all single family homes. That's, that's actually the reality. We're hearing from a lot of developers. The banks are, are, are not looking at these mixed housing type projects in a favorable light.
Which I was supposed, that was supposed to be the Godsend, you know, to affordable housing.
It's really unfortunate, but the lending institutions are not catching up with us on that.
But to answer you, so who asked the question about the styles? Was that you, Aaron, or Holly?
Yeah, me. I just
The, the, you know, the, the elevations and the renderings I saw, there is some variety.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's definitely not, you know, a cement block building. There's architectural features, there's gables, there's, you know, different, you know, from, from building to building, even, even within a building, Mike, there was different sightings and, and
That's correct. They, they, so, so the builder is, is going to be Nelson Construction, Highcroft, Mill Pond.
Okay.
So, you know, he, he, he has a reputation in town. The architect was Jack Kemper, Kemper Associates out of Farmington. And he, they, they actually had some pre-application meetings with the design review board with explicit instructions to, you know, one, we don't want it to look like every other multifamily housing development in town. We want it to have character. But we want it to have character that, that, that's kind of
Use that word. I don't like
That's what I was thinking, though. I, I, we want it to look like kind of the architectural environment of the community. So incorporate some of the features, the stone, the, 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 just, just the, 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 the details. And that's what Jack did as he developed the plans for Nelson and Company. So it's, it's, it's not a, it's, it's a higher quality than what, you know, you want to say for a typical multifamily housing.
I just loved the idea of like they had the little bungalows and they had, I mean, it was really cool what they had before. But Mike, why is it that the banks aren't? What about the mixed use or is, do they just don't know?
They just don't know.
Okay.
Don't know. And it's, it's, it's been, I've heard this from other developers. When you get into the mixed housing, housing type, for example, Cambridge Crossing, that was supposed to have mixed housing types up there. It's only, it's primarily single family homes now. Because when he went to get financing, they wouldn't approve half the project.
Okay.
Yeah, Mike, isn't the, the, aren't there more units planned than in the way we were shown?
No, it was, you were shown about about a hundred and thirty, it, it's, it's a hundred and fifty-five. So technically they're, they're
Oh, okay. So not that much.
But not, not a significant increase. This is not like his density tripled in order to, to, to get a yield out of the project.
He had to go like up ten, fifteen percent. Yeah.
Yeah. And, and he, he committed without any intervention from the town to put an affordable component, affordability component to this project. He's looking at eighty percent. And if there, if HUD funding comes through, he's going to also maybe go to a lower percentage. So, I mean, he deserves it. That a boy for that, that he, he's not just building a multifamily housing development in the center and trying to get as much money as possible. He's doing the right thing and putting some affordable housing units, which is ideal in the center.
Center town area. And really what did the
Sorry.
Oh, you got, I, you said Chris Nelson gone.
Yeah, I'm trying to, I'm trying to get to the elevation view on his presentation. That was my, that was my multi. Can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
I have, I think I have two microphones going, so. All right. So we do this, we share.
So all that's coming up, I'll just say that the banks are probably not wanting to lend on those because of cash flow reasons and your ability to fill those shops to get to the cash flow to pay them back. So they're more concerned with, with getting paid back than they are with anything else.
But why would that be less cash flow, Rich?
Because you may have trouble in this environment right now, finding tenants for commercial space.
Oh, I get it. Okay.
Yeah.
Did the original have commercial space in it? I, I actually, I still have the original presentation. We were given. I thought there was commercial space in there.
Yeah, I thought it's a restroom. Yeah, I thought it was a restaurant or something.
No, actually, so that's, that's an SC five zoning district. Residential use is the only thing permitted in the zoning district.
Oh, okay.
Okay, yeah, we didn't, it wasn't, it wasn't mixed commercial use.
So can you guys, can you see my screen now?
Yeah.
So there's a, you know, a couple of side elevations uh showing different uh different roof lines, different siding, uh different entrance ways.
That's very cute. The doors on the garage look sort of high-end if those are garage doors.
They are. Whoops. This was Chris Nelson presenting to the Government Affairs Board of the Chamber of Commerce.
Actually, Bill, if you want, I, 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 I have the plans. I can pull them up if you want.
I didn't want to spend a whole lot of time on it, Mike.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, okay, this is why I wanted to show just the uh, the layout. Uh, Iron Horse Boulevard is down here.
Ah.
And of course, this is, these are the soccer fields, AKA concert grass.
Yeah. Clubhouse.
So we got five buildings, five big buildings, clubhouse, pool, garages. Yep, so yeah, the, the little um mini neighborhood did not materialize.
Yeah, that's what I liked about that other plan, yeah.
Looks like it's nicely set back from, from Iron Horse.
Yeah, you know, Chris, he, Chris actually made a note that, you know, this is like eighty feet of
Oh, wow.
of grass or green space, as he called it. I don't know if it'll be cut like grass, maybe it'll be a field. But also, you know, a buffer with uh some, uh, some plantings. So, yeah, yeah. I, I think, I think, I like the other plan. I, I like this plan too. Okay.
I like the other plan because they had porches and decks and patios or whatever. It was nice.
Yeah, and they had, they had, you know, the parking lot or the, uh, driveways in the back and things.
No decks or patios here, huh?
Uh, but like everything else, there's controversy already on it.
Oh yeah? What do you hear?
I've already been accosted on Iron Horse Boulevard walking about the whole issue. And I say, we didn't, we don't get to, we don't get any input on this.
They don't like it, Holly?
Well, you know, again, uh, if you go and show Plan A and then three years later you come back with Plan B and Plan B doesn't look nearly as nice as Plan A. And again, that, the, the price tag had gone up and
Yeah.
so there's, yeah, I've.
Why, why, why would someone be concerned about the price tag?
Um, I think that was the feeling that that's why the, so much had changed.
So what?
Changed.
Town's not paying for it.
No, 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 it's, it's not. Look, and I'm not even on any committee that deals with it. Uh, it's just, this is what I this is.
So somebody, somebody felt like they were bait and switched?
Um, yeah, that, that the town gave a, a sort of a, a preliminary approval for something that did not materialize, but benefited um, the person who uh presented.
Sold the property, yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I, again, this is just as you know what it's like being on the planning commission, anytime someone's got something to say about what's going on in town, uh, they they generally say it to you if they see you.
Uh-huh. Okay, very good then. Um, I'm gonna think we're gonna put a, put a halt to it here. Um, gonna have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Erin. Is there a second?
Second.
Craig, thank you. Any discussion on the motion to adjourn the meeting? All of the, for the German, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before I close the meeting, I'm just gonna say our next meeting is October twelfth. That sound right?
Yep.
Yep.
October twelfth, good, okay. If I don't see you before then, be safe out there and we'll talk to you on the twelfth.
All right, thanks.